We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda with possible action is council comments. Councilor Bedison, would you like to start?
No comment.
Councilor Gray?
Real quick, like, version is a very important part of our community, of our grand county. I would hope that more people go and go see their games, men's and women's basketball, and also support your high school, even though they're 10 miles apart, go and support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bedison.
No comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to make everybody aware that the Silver City Neighbors Alliance, which you can also find at scneighborsalliance.com, is holding a symposium on preparedness on March 7th through the 8th, 2014, from 8:00 to 5:00, at Western New Mexico's Bestie Forward Global Resource Center. It is a very good opportunity for the community to become more aware of preparedness and defensible space and all the safety issues that we need to know as a community. So, I hope everybody can make some time and attend that. The lineup of speakers is very, very good, from local to statewide, and I think it'll be quite informative. And that's all. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council from January 14th, 2014.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
I'm going to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting of January 14th, 2014.
One second, Mr. Mayor. There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve, being no discussion, all was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any vote, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the new reports. First report is a report on the municipal infrastructure grocery receipts tax in the amount of 1/8 of 1% for public safety purposes. A question to the voters will be on the ballot of the upcoming regular election to be held on March 4th, 2014. Chief?
I'll pass the first part of this to Mayor City Council, I apologize. I'll pass the first part of this off to Anita to go ahead and go through.
Okay, so like you said, the question will be put on the ballot of the upcoming election on whether or not to continue the public safety taxes. Real brief history, that tax was imposed in the 2004 regular town election. The purpose of that tax was solely for public safety purposes. There was a 10-year sunset put on that, which is expiring this year, and which is the reason why it's going to the voters once again. Just real quick, there's a breakdown on how the grocery receipts is dedicated. Any questions? And if you want me to read all those chapters. Again, just another breakdown on what the town receives. As of, for fiscal year 2014, as of December 31st, the town has brought in $202,000 for public safety. Within the past 10 years, we've brought in approximately $3.4 million, and which that $4 million has been used for public safety. Out of that $3.4 million, we have paid the salary and benefits for four police officers. We've purchased 17 patrol units. We've paid the salary and benefits for one firefighter and a ladder truck, for a total of 3.3, approximately $3.3 million. If the tax is approved, the town will continue to provide three additional police officers. Originally, it was four, but because of the increase in salary and benefits, we can only pay for three police officers. We will also continue to provide additional police equipment, the one firefighter, and additional fire equipment. And again, there's no tax increase, this is just a continuation of what's already been in place. If the tax is not approved, the town would not be able to maintain the current staffing levels for the police and fire, and other services would have to be cut within the town. If it's not approved, the tax rate would decrease by, that's the typo, there should be .125%, which would amount to a savings of 12 and 1/2 cents per every $100 that is Any questions?
You did good.
Thank you.
Mayor City Council, as stated earlier by Anita, when the public safety tax came into existence, intent was to fund four officers and the purchase of police vehicles. Because of the increase in salaries and actually also benefits in longevity, that changed. We now fund three officers, and of course, it continues as funding for purchase of equipment, specifically vehicles, and equipment associated with those vehicles. One of the things that we found interesting when the city manager was looking into this is that during the period of time when this tax was enacted, the longevity for police officers was about three years. That's increased to about eight years now. So, on average, we have officers staying approximately eight years with our department. So, that's a good thing, based on incentives that we have for police officers and the pay increases that have occurred. So far over the life of the public safety tax as stated, the city has purchased 17 vehicles. One of the issues that we have right now, and I'll go in depth as to why we need not only the personnel, but we also need the purchase of vehicles. As of this presentation, the majority of our police vehicles are in need of replacing. Our oldest is a 1998. Our newest is 2012. And I'm going to break down the type of vehicles that we have, the actual year of each vehicle, and give you the average mileage of those vehicles. Keep in mind that nationally, police units are considered outdated at 75,000 miles. They become a safety issue for police officers, and they become more of a higher maintenance cost for departments. I'll give an example, two 1998s, we have an average of 140,000 miles on those vehicles. We have one 2000 pickup truck, which is what the animal control drives, and his vehicle's at 204,000 miles. We've hung on to this for a long time. Because of our take-home program, and I'll say this now, we've been able to stretch out our vehicles. We almost doubled the mileage that's recommended on all our vehicles. Problem is, our cost of maintenance is increasing. We have six 2001s that average 142,000 miles. We have seven 2005s that average 104,000 miles. One 2006 that has 74,000 miles, six 2008s that have 59 as an average, and five 2012s that have 20,000 miles on them. So, we anticipate keeping the 2008 and 2012s and extend that into probably 2016, the way we're taking care of our vehicles. Having said that, we still have 16 vehicles that we need to replace. The cost of those vehicles now are running, back then when we first made the purchases off these, the public safety tax, those vehicles were running, fully equipped, about 25,000. Now, now those vehicles are at about 30,000 apiece. The general budget cannot sustain or handle the purchase of those vehicles. Previously, prior to this tax, when I was employed here before, we would probably buy five vehicles a year, which of course, it costs a lot less back then. But even at the cost of each vehicle today, and we purchased five vehicles, that's $150,000 with equipment, per year, because we'll have to continually replace them. Again, we've been able to stretch the use of those vehicles and keeping the vehicles into almost 10 years, simply because we have a take-home program, and those vehicles are not driven 24/7. They operate eight hours a day, or sometimes if there's overtime, 12 hours a day. It depends on activity. I didn't include the investigative bureau's vehicles in these stats, simply because we replaced most of those back in 2008, and all those units are under 50,000 miles. So, those vehicles will last us quite a while. The other thing that I want to mention, that the public safety tax will also help pay for, is the purchase of mobile data terminals for our units. Currently, we're using computers that we purchased back in 2006. Those are ancient, and they're not working well. And we've had to piecemeal them, we've had to purchase them refurbished, just to keep those up and running. So, we're looking to also replace those as well. One of the things that I want to talk about is that if we do end up, if the citizens pass this, and we hope that they do, what will happen is in the previous purchase of vehicles and equipment, we'd have to go to the New Mexico DFA Department of Finance Authority and get a loan. As an example, in 2008, when we purchased approximately 12 vehicles, that's what we did, and we ended up paying that loan off last year, which was in three years, approximately three years. If we don't pass this, it affects a lot of things. It affects the ability to maintain our current performance of standard. This last year was one of the best years that we've had in production, and we've also had a decrease in the number of calls from the previous year. Our officers stayed very busy, and we impact crime. As an example, and our stats will come out Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, we ended up having, as an example, 201 burglaries. But this last year, we also had a very high success rate in arresting 54 of those burglars, who probably were involved in the majority of our burglaries here in this town. So, other things that will suffer is that we won't be able to maintain the programs that we have, such as Operation, DWI, selective traffic enforcement, and other programs that are deemed necessary to impact our traffic issues and also impact our crime. So, we're asking the citizens of Silver City to please back us. That's not increasing, that's only maintaining, and it allows your department, Silver City Police Department, to continue at the pace that we are at current. Any questions?
No questions. No questions. Hold on, Chief, before you get started. Test that.
Test, test.
Nothing.
Test? What's that?
Does that have a battery?
Test, test. One, two, three. Yeah, that's great. Can you hear me now?
Okay, we can hear you now.
Okay, Mayor Council, I just want to follow up a little bit on what Anita covered and Chief Reynolds did. You know, I just want to start out by stating that this is not a tax, a new tax, it's just a continuation of the tax that was implemented 10 years ago. 10 years ago, we were asked what we saw as a public safety need at that time, and I know the chief mentioned the need for additional police officers, and at that time, I believe he needed additional police units. I was tasked, and I was asked, what do we need? Of course, I would have loved to have additional firefighters, but I was, I saw the greater need to have a ladder truck. We tried to look into the future, what their needs are going to be, and as we all know, we have a new construction that was recently done at Western New Mexico with the additional housing for the students up there. So, we saw that need for, to have that type of vehicle. At that time, we had a snorkel that was, that was only capable of extending 45 feet. So, that cost was just over half a million dollars. So, anyway, if the impact on the fire operation, if it does not pass, would be that we would lose the additional firefighter that we were, that we received. The chief mentioned the salary, the benefits. For those that may not know, we currently have two stations. One on Hudson Street, at that station, we have four personnel. At Station Two, we have three assigned to that station. So, it would definitely impact our ability to respond to emergencies, fires, grass fires, et cetera, et cetera. The only way to maintain our current staffing would obviously, it would affect the additional departments in the city. Every time I walked to my office, I'm just appreciative of the way our parks department, Keepsco Park, those type of departments, the street departments, the water department, parks department, every department would be affected. So, we certainly do not want to see those services affected. So, it's important that we make an issue and we strive to make sure that this taxing, the continuation of this tax passes. I'm not sure if you can see the slide there, but I think it was important to mention that as department chiefs, we strive to find other sources of funding to get equipment, and these are just some of the grants that we applied. For those that may not know, we were awarded just under a $60,000 grant for bunker gear. We have to replace our bunker gear about every five years, so we need to have money to meet those matches. And as you see to the right, we had to come up with $12,000, and that was the source where we were able to get that money. Our greatest need right now are medic trucks, the ambulances. They're approximately 12 years old. They're constantly in our, and the mechanic shops for some time, some type of maintenance work. There has been an increase from when I was back on shift, approximately 10 years ago. The average number of medical calls that we respond to back then was about 72%. We were just, we are seeing approximately 90% of our calls being requested for medical calls. So, that needs to be, something that needs to be addressed. We applied for a grant in hopes that we receive monies to purchase one unit. That public safety tax is of course $70,000. We requested from the legislative, we're hoping to get $115,000. Our match would be $35,000. And there's other grants that we have applied for, and the bottom line is the total is about $435,000. Our match would be approximately $140,000. The point I'm trying to make is that we have to get monies somewhere. The public safety tax increase would allow us to get that money, make that available. As you all know, grants are not a sure thing, they're very competitive, it doesn't assure that we're going to get them. If we don't get them, at least we have a public safety tax increase. There's been increase in fires, as you all know. I was unable to get the statistics for 2013, but just to give you an idea, in 2010, we had approximately 40 grass fires. 2011, we had 36. That was the year that we had the Quail Ridge Fire. In 2012, we had 39. Structure fires, in 2010, we had 21. 2011, we had 27. And in 2012, we had 16. Medical calls for 2010 were 2,765. 2011, 2,726. And in 2012, just under 3,000 calls. So, just based on the statistics, our needs right now are to replace our medic trucks, and eventually, while on brush trucks. And those are approximately 12 years old too, so it's very important that the public understands that, once again, it's not a new tax, it's just a continuation to provide equipment for police officers, our firefighters. It is a public safety issue for our personnel. We can't ask our people to go out and do their jobs if we cannot provide them with the proper units, apparatus, and equipment. I can't help but think that, I believe, and the chief might help me here, there, I think probably one of the dangerous calls that they respond to are domestics, and I believe you have to have two officers to respond to that call, and I can't help but think that those officers need to make sure that they have their proper bulletproof vests. We can't put our police officers in harm. The same thing applies to our firefighters, we cannot put them in a situation where they could get hurt or killed to do their jobs. So, I'm going to ask once again that the public votes for the public safety tax increase. It's a great thing, you know, enable us to plan for the future, to provide the equipment for our personnel. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Any questions, comments? Councilor Rose?
Mr. Mayor, this is more of a comment, but it stems from a comment that the chief just mentioned, is without, if this tax fails, we, you know, you'll have a, there'll be a new council, and one of the first things that they're going to be dealing with is a budget. And I truly believe that it would be, it's going to be very, very difficult for a new council to work with, if this doesn't pass, to live with a lack of public safety. We can't turn our backs on public safety, you know, it's one of the, one of our main mandates that we have to protect and see through for our public, which tells me that we will, the budget dilemma that will be faced is we're going to have to come up with money somewhere, services are going to have to be cut somewhere. And the comment was, is you know, we have a good public works department, a good water department, and we're maintaining services to the community, fiscally, in a fiscally responsible way, and we're doing a pretty good job. I see this important from the standpoint that it can be very challenging if we have to make some decisions and cut our budget elsewhere to make sure that our public, our citizens are safe, and that we're serving them in the most vital areas. So, I appreciate that comment is my comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Bedison?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to agree with Councilor Rose, you know, the council's charged with the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens, and we've talked about that, and you've both mentioned that. Fire, police, water, and wastewater are at the top of those things. Safe roads, all of those things are important because we have to have safe roads for our officers and our fire folks to get to and from, and also for our citizens to travel along. But there are other things that we may have to cut in order to provide those services if this tax does not pass. It is not a new tax, as both of you have said, it's a continuation of something. And I think the fact that if it did not pass, the savings would be 12 and 1/2 cents for every $100 that's spent, I mean, for 12 and 1/2 cents for every $100 spent, to have that peace of mind to know that we have the fire and the police and the safety equipment and the vehicles that are needed. I mean, this doesn't include, I think as I've mentioned before, when we moved forward on the ordinance the first time around, that this doesn't include the maintenance on those vehicles, that's still taken care of in another venue, and other monies that we receive through your GRT. This is specifically dedicated solely to this, and over 10 years, it was $3.4 million. So, those monies are expended specifically for this purpose, and this purpose only. It's not banked in any way, it's used for this purpose. So, to me, it's a worthwhile tax, and I hope that we continue it. Otherwise, there'll be some difficult decisions ahead for the council in the future, as Councilor Rose has stated.
I wanted to point out, if you go back to the chart that was put out there on the GRT breakdown, I think it's important for the public to know, when you go out and you purchase things, and you look at the bottom of your receipt, it shows that you're being charged 7.375% tax in Silver City. Is that correct, Anita? Okay. And out of that, the state share is 5.125, the county share is .6875, which leaves the town with the remaining balance of that tax at 1.5625. So, that tax is broke down into nine increments that are, some of them are specific to purpose, environmental, infrastructure, and environmental, infrastructure, and this one is public safety. The, what it boils down to at the end of the day, when, if this fails, your tax would, on your receipt, would show seven-point-two-five. So, it, it's really not that much, and the impact that we get from that is just huge. We're looking, I mean, you look at the, the total amounts that, that the tax has brought in over the last ten years, and three, almost three-and-a-half million, as of today, it'll be three-point-six, three-point-seven million by the end of this fiscal year. It's just really critical. The reason the Silver City Neighborhood Alliance is putting on the forum for preparedness is that the natural hazards and the natural dangers out there are increasing, and we, we have to be able to respond. We're going to have to maintain certain levels of public safety. When, when the fire department gets a call, we can't tell the nine-one-one caller, "I'm sorry, your house is on fire," or "Your neighbor lit the, your backyard on fire, we're out of money this year." We can't do that, which puts us in a responsive budgeting mode, where at the end of the year, after the public safety agencies have expended their budgets, then we're trying to make drastic cuts at the end of the budget cycle. And that's just not a good way to run a, run a business, it's not a good way to run the town, and that typically affects the employees first, because that's a, a very large percent of our, of our budget every year. So, please, take a look at the tax, take a look at the benefit that you've gotten from it, and the same way the taxes broke down, so is, are the department budgets and where they get their, the revenue comes from that supports them. This is not their only fun, their only source of funding. We've, we have added police officers in the last few years, we, the chief has done very well with the fire department in getting grants, and we need to maintain that. We need to not only maintain it, we need to improve it, and we need to increase our public safety. The, the dangers are there, and now is not a time to, to put that over the edge. As Counselor Rose mentioned, there'll be a new council that would have to face a, a denial of this. So, I really don't have a dog in the fight, other than I am a citizen of this town and will remain one, when this, after this election. So, I will absolutely support this, I will vote for it, and I truly hope that the citizens of Silver City will find the value in it and will come out and support it. The, you don't know who's going to need the service, and I've often heard, you don't value emergency services until you need them. And let's, let's make sure they're there to answer the call in sufficient numbers and with, excuse me, with sufficient resources. Thank you. Anything else, Chief? I put you to sleep, didn't I? Did I put you to sleep?
No.
There's nothing else on that report, we'll move on to staff reports. Ann, would you like to talk about the elections?
Yes, I wanted to provide some dates on our upcoming election. On January twenty-eighth, at City Hall, that's the first day that people can vote absentee. On February fourth, it's the last day to register to vote. The county clerk closes his books on our municipal elections voter registration that day. So, if anyone has had a name change, an address change, or simply need to register, please do so by February fourth. Also, on February twelfth, that's the first day persons can come into City Hall and vote on the voting machine. So, I just wanted to mention those things, because our next council meeting is February eleventh, and some of those dates would have passed.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Scavron, anything out of the legal department?
No, thank you.
Anita?
No.
Leanne?
No.
You're not done yet, are you? Chief Reynolds, any report?
Mayor, City Council, the only other thing I had to add, like I mentioned earlier, I'll have all the stats, year-end stats, done and out, and posted on our website by, no later than Wednesday of next week. You'll receive a copy of it. Stats look pretty good, the, we'll probably have a discussion, a report at the next council meeting, if so desired, and I can put forth some of the information.
If you complete the form in triplicate.
I'm sorry?
If you complete the form in triplicate, we'll get you on the agenda. Chief, been called? All right. Still want you to feel left out, Robert. The next item on the agenda with action is under new business, approval disapproval of bid number thirteen slash fourteen dash three, Blackhawk Road Gravity Sewer Improvements, Phase Two. Leanne?
Mayor and council members, on December thirtieth, bids were received, six bids were received for bid number thirteen slash fourteen dash three, for the Blackhawk Gravity Sewer Improvement, Phase Two. The staff recommends that we award the bid to Diamond Construction for a base bid amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-fourteen. An additive alternate number one for twenty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. Additive number two for twelve-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. Additive number three, thirteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-three dollars, with a total bid of three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars without gross receipts tax, that is contingent upon ONRT's approval of additional funds for this construction project.
Do we need to make sure in the motion that the approval by ONRT is prior to, we can't just award the bid until we have the approval, correct?
Contingent on approval from ONRT.
Any discussion? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I move to approve bid number thirteen slash fourteen dash three, Blackhawk Road Gravity Sewer Improvements, Phase Two. Let me read them.
Yeah, you need to say who we're, who we're awarding it to, and then make sure it's contingent on sufficient funding.
To award the bid to Blackhawk Gravity Sewer Improvements, Phase Two, Phase Two, Diamond Construction Incorporated, base bid two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. Additive alternative number one, twenty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. Additive alternative, alternate number two, twelve-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. An additive alternate number three, thirteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-three dollars, for a total bid of three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, and three, three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars, contingent on the...
ONRT.
ONRT.
Mr. Mayor, I second the, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second to award bid thirteen slash fourteen dash three for staff recommendation. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve bid number thirteen slash fourteen dash three, Blackhawk Road Gravity Sewer Improvement, Phase Two, for staff recommendation to Diamond Construction Incorporated for three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars without gross receipts, contingent on ONRT's approval of additional funding. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of March fourth, two thousand and fourteen election workers. Ms. Mackey?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is our list of election workers for our March fourth election. Many are familiar names, because they work our elections every year, they've had training every year, there's some new ones there also. Our election school is February twenty-sixth, so all attend the training, and I'm asking you to approve this list.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I move to approve the list of March fourth, two thousand and fourteen election workers as presented.
Just a second. I'll second that. There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any other discussion? I'd just like to comment that we owe the, these volunteers a big, big thank you. I mean, with, without their, their service, the elections couldn't go on. They ensure that everybody gets a fair shot to vote, and that all the rules are followed at the polling places, and it is just a, a huge part of the, the process that we live in. So, please, share that with a man that, and I'm confident I can speak for the council on, on that matter. There is a motion and a second to approve the election workers for March fourth, two thousand and fourteen, as presented. Would be no other discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, a second to motion.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.